Followed by a moment of silence. And please remember Nick Winham, who was shot and killed in the line of duty on February 26th, and the Winham family from Walden. Betsy Abraham, our county legislative attorney, who Nick is her brother-in-law. And also, please remember all those affected by the coronavirus and the families of those who have unfortunately passed away. Carrie Gallagher's brother, I know, passed away as a result, and her prayers are with her, too. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic of this land, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Benelli?
Present.
Paduk?
Here.
Ama?
Here.
Nigasakis? Nigasakis is here, it looks like he's muted. Benton?
Here.
Chaney?
Here.
Fagion?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Kulasek?
Here.
Luhan?
Present.
Manuda?
Present.
O'Donnell?
Here.
Ruskovich?
Here.
Sassy?
Here.
Sierra?
Here.
Stenganga?
I'm here.
Sutherland? Sutherland? Totell?
Present.
Tui?
Here.
Vero?
Here.
Russia?
Here.
Twenty present, one absent.
Before we get started, I'd like to thank all the frontline workers and essential workers for the vaccination process, which has been going extremely well. Legislator Fagion, you want to say just a word or two? I know you've been over there a lot lately, and I know a few others have as well. So maybe just a couple comments.
Very quickly, Chairman, thank you. I want to thank all of the county employees, colleagues, who for the last few weeks have made it a point to get the phone calls out there and get our citizens registered for the vaccines. Vaccines are coming, and as quickly as they come, the county executive and a team has put them into play and into the arms of our citizens. And I just hope that we can all continue to work together on that and start with those we need the most and get to all the people that need that so that we can forge ahead. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Legislator Fagion. If there are no objections, Agenda Items 7 through 9 and Numbers 18 through 22 will be voted on collectively. If there are no objections, some resolutions will be voted by voice vote and not by roll call, which I'll define at the beginning of each resolution. Only respond if you are a no vote or an abstention. Public participation will be postponed to a future legislative session, but the public is invited to send their written comments via email to jramppen, that's J-R-A-M-P-P-E-N at orangecountygov.com, at orangecountygov.com. And if there are no objections, I would ask that we move Number 4 and Number 5 to the end, because there is going to be an executive session at the end, which I will not be participating in, and then you will decide on 4 and 5 after the executive session. So that's the reason for that, okay? All right. A, Orange County Board of Elections' annual report 2020, receive and file. 1A, receive and file. Number 1, which is a local law, introductory local law, Number 2 of 2021. Kelly?
Legislators Ama, Chaney, Benton, Benelli, and Paduk. Local law to continue the imposition of tax under Local Law Number 13 of 2009, known as Orange County Hotel and Motel Room Occupancy Tax Local Law, for an additional three years.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? Okay, this is a roll call.
Steve, I had my hand up. I just wanted to add all Dems added, please.
Yes, not a problem.
All Dems added, please.
Not a problem. Okay. Roll call, Kelly.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Ama?
Yes.
Nigasakis?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Chaney?
Yes.
Fagion?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Kulasek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Yes, aye.
Manuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
Aye.
Stenganga? Sutherland?
If you're an aye, remember, you don't have to say aye.
Okay. And Sutherland is present. Totell?
Yes.
Tui?
Yes.
Vero?
Yes.
Russia? Twenty-one ayes.
Thank you. Number 2, and this is a voice vote.
Chairman, back to the point order. This is Legislator Fagion.
Go ahead, Legislator Fagion.
Excuse me for my interruption, but in the lobby, we're waiting for Count Batman. Could some administrator please admit him into the beating, please?
Yeah, he's been having some trouble getting in. It keeps saying "action failed," and again, it says "action failed."
Who was that, Langdon?
Yeah.
I'm in.
Oh, you're in, oh, good, good, good.
I was gonna tell you to keep him out. Just kidding. Okay, where were we? Number 2, where were we?
Number 2, yes. Legislators Vero and Benelli. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Board of Elections to accept and appropriate grant funds from the state of New York pursuant to Section 99-H of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second, Ruskovich. Okay. Discussion. Minority Leader Paduk, all Democrats want to be added?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, all Democrats. I just want to make a comment, too. You know, we hear the complaints about not getting any money for these mandates that are put on us. Well, here's 158,289. And just to remind you that, you know, the state now is being controlled by the Democrats. Just so you know, when we keep saying that, I'm gonna bring it up every time, that we are getting money back, so it doesn't look so bad for us.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Okay. Legislator Hines, and then Legislator Totell?
Yeah, I'd just like to say it's not enough money to cover the costs.
Good point. Okay. Legislator Totell? You're muted.
Could you just remind everybody to mute, because I'm getting some background feedback.
Okay. I think most of them are that I see. Okay. All right. Legislator Fagion, you want to say something?
Thank you, Chairman. I echo the sentiments of Legislator Hines. Last year during deliberations, the state, in their infinite wisdom, imposed new rules in terms of elections and whatnot, and he is absolutely correct. The state even admitted that they knew that the funding would not cover all the new implementation costs, and yet those implementations were still put into play. So as much as this is a nice step forward, it's only a half a step forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 When it's a voice vote, I want you to say aye, okay? All right. Any opposed? Carry. Okay, Number 3, which is also a voice vote. Go ahead, Kelly. Oh, wait a minute. Okay, yeah, we're gonna do that one now, right? Okay. I guess.
Legislators O'Donnell, Stenganga, and Totell. Resolution seeking financial disclosures from the Orange County Industrial Development Agency.
Second, Vero.
Okay. Minority Leader Paduk?
Yes, Steve, just add all Dems, please, to that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Opposed? And I think I'm gonna abstain on this. Yeah, because I have to. Really? Okay? One extension. Okay, Carrie. 4 and 5 are at the end. Number 6, which is a voice vote also.
Legislators Totell and Sutherland. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Office for the Aging to accept and appropriate grant funds from Amercor's seniors pursuant to Section 99-H of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. No opposed, all carried. Okay, 7 through 9, voice vote. You don't need to read those. I don't believe, Kelly, right?
No.
All in... Okay. Paduk, yes.
Can you just add all Dems to those, please? Thank you.
Yes, I can, or we can. Ladies can. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Okay, Number 10 is also a voice vote. Number 10, Kelly?
Legislative Sutherland and Totell. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to accept and appropriate additional grant funds from the New York State Department of Health pursuant to Section 99-H of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second, Vero.
Okay. Discussion? Yeah, Mike, you want all Dems?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Just give me the thumbs up if you want.
Okay.
I don't have to worry about you unmuting, all right?
Okay. That's not funny.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Okay. Number 11 is a voice vote also. Go ahead, Kelly.
Legislators Fagion, Vero, Hines, Stenganga, Sierra, and Sassy. Resolution ratifying the Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative Panel Reform and Reinvention Plan.
Okay. Let's... I'm sorry. Do you get a second? John Vero?
Ruskovich, second.
Oh, so Ruskovich, I'm sorry. Okay. You want to be added, Legislator Tui?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Excuse me, I have already added all Republicans to this.
Okay, that's fine.
Thanks.
Legislator Totell had her hand up, but she went away, so I'm gonna go to Legislator Fagion and then move on, and then Lori. Okay.
I'm here.
We'll get you, Lori. And then Ama, too. Go ahead.
Chairman, with respect, I'll concede the floor to Legislator Totell that she's back.
Okay. All right. Legislator Totell, and then Luhan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Legislator Fagion. While I have some reservations in regards to what was not addressed in this process, I have hope for the future on it, because it is a living and open document, and I hope that we can work together to seek funding for body cameras for our sheriff's department, as well as address some more systemic issues that were not looked at wholly in this process. So I look forward to this being a good opening document and a good beginning, and I will be voting in the polls.
I thought the body cam was addressed at the Public Safety meeting. I thought that was addressed, that that was taken care of. Legislator Hines, can you clarify that?
There's no funding yet, so I'm hoping that we all work together to try and find that.
Okay. It's just the funding.
In response to that, the sheriff's office is fully in favor of body cameras. They're just worried about the storage and the cost of it, and they already have some of their management staff looking at grant funds and other municipalities that are doing that and how they're doing it with respect to the storage and the cloud, things of that nature. So we are in favor of it. They're looking not only for grant money, but if we can do it within our own resources based on the research they're doing.
As I said, I'm hoping, I look forward to us all working together to find the funding for this, for our sheriff's department, and I said this is a good beginning, step addressing mental health issues. That's huge, but there is more work to be done, and there always is. Thank you.
Thank you. And Legislative Sutherland is present. Did we note that? Kelly?
Yes, we did, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Legislator Luhan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo some of the sentiments and the comments made by Legislator Totell. You know, I think that there was definitely a lot of great stuff that came out of this imagining forum. You know, there was, you know, just talking about the creation of a space on the website to make anonymous complaint, I thought that was really great, you know, that they were able to arrive to that conclusion. I think that was really excellent. They're gonna create a button, I believe, on the website. I think that that's fantastic. I am, you know, we did talk about the body cameras, that due to the fact that they are very costly, that it's costly to have the data storage. I totally understand that. I'm happy to hear that the sheriff's office is in support of that. I'm very much in support of that. I was happy to also see about the hiring practices. I mean, this, you know, while, you know, it was great to see in the actual report, and I'm pretty much quoting verbatim, it said, "We're glad that, you know, that they highlighted that unlike..." It highlighted that many agencies across Orange County, you know, like many of them across Orange County, it doesn't reflect the diversity. And so, you know, that's okay. We understand that it doesn't do that, but that there is a plan in place to work towards that, and we're seeing that in the hiring practices. So I was really happy that that was part of the report. The two things, two or three things that I think that really stuck out to me, and I think that they remain very important. The first one is about the training. So I do see that they're talking about diversity training, bias-based training. There are reports out there that indicate that these kinds of trainings are usually not as effective. So if we're looking at evidence-based practice, that's actually not the kind of trainings that are the most suitable, particularly when we're talking about issues around racism. You know, honestly, you know, while we do crisis intervention training at the academy, which I totally applaud, I've worked with crisis intervention training for several years. I'm very, very familiar with crisis intervention training. I'm very part, I've been a part of alternative incarceration for many years as well, so I'm fully, fully, fully have a great grasp of that. But anti-racism training at the academy is really where we should be pushing for, and if not at the academy, at least making sure that it's part of the curriculum for all our officers. But I want to also create, kind of highlight something that Legislator Totell mentioned. She mentioned systemic issues, right? And, you know, for the last year plus, I've talked, you know, talked a lot about the systemic problems that we face, not only just in Orange County, but across the country. And so when we're addressing issues that are systemic, it has to be a top-down approach, right? So you have to have the buy-in from the top. So crisis intervention training, it wouldn't work if it wasn't that the sheriff made, had a buy-in, and really believed in it, and he does. And so, again, I just want to make sure that we're very intentional about things like anti-racism training, that it's a top-down approach, that we're making sure that we're implementing that. I didn't hear from the sheriff that they were very against that, but I'd like, would have liked to see more about anti-racism, particularly since the 203 was very much focused around Black and Brown communities and very much came in the aftermath of the Black Lives Matter movement. There was a talk about the diversity officer on our meetings. You know, I talked about creating a diversity officer last May, when we mentioned the need to highlight all the issues that we have in our county. I definitely would support a diversity officer, but not just for the sheriff's office, but for the entire, for the entire county. And then I'll end with this. You know, I, again, I do see the great points, the great things that are coming from this program, but I can tell you that something that was very, that was mentioned a lot by my constituents was just having something as simple as a card that could be given to people when they're being pulled over. And we did, we did a two-hour-and-a-half event on Zoom a day or two, a month or so ago. And, you know, it was sad to hear so many individuals talk about their interactions, not only with police officers, you know, in local municipalities, but also our sheriff's office. And it was the talk about, you know, like how we can do a better job of communicating, connecting with our, with our, with our, with the law enforcement, things as simple as a card, whether it's to give a complaint, or whether it's to give, you know, to say, "Oh, this officer did a really great job." And so that seemed like it was kind of shot down, unfortunately. During the forum, it seems to have gotten a little bit less, you know, less negative attention at the Public Safety Committee, but I think that this is a very low-cost thing that we could be doing, that every single officer, if they're on duty and they're interacting with a community resident, that they should just give them a card with their information, pre-printed. It's not a very expensive thing. So I would have liked to have seen that. I would have liked to see more talk about anti-racism training. I would have also liked...
I think you brought all these points up at committee, you know?
I'm sorry?
I think you brought all these points up at committee, did you?
I'm aware. I'm aware that I raised them in committee, but, you know, the entire legislature was not in that committee, and so it's, I'm reflecting it once again. And for those who are viewing this, because they can't do public comment and comment on this, they're hearing it now again, Mr. Chairman. So, but yeah, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Caucus Leader Ama? Mike, you're muted. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
I want to be added to that, that's the first point. Please add me to this resolution, but I think what's really good about it, and I did participate within the Albany Law School program on this particular issue, it was an hour program, and I think it's, I think his name is Shaki, I think, for the first name, his last name is Shaki. He runs a program for the governor's office, and the message he was giving this group, the group of lawyers who were participating that happened to listen in, was this is just the beginning, and this is a way to begin to move things forward step by step by step. And I think our sheriff did a great job in trying to do it for us in the county, and so I don't see it as a weakness, but I see it as a beginning step to better things. So I really encourage it, and I'm glad to be a sponsor. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Legislator Hines?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think all of you know I served on this committee on behalf of the county, and I'd just like to extend my congratulations to the sheriff's office, because they were very open and transparent. Anybody who didn't watch our second meeting, where the sheriff's office showed each and every, I think it was almost every member of the command staff talked about the areas of responsibility they have. They talked about something many of you probably don't even know about, and that is that the Special Operations Group does crisis intervention, and they do, what do you call, I guess it's de-escalation-type training after an incident, things of that nature. It's something that I think many of us probably don't know. With respect to Anadi Esposito, our Human Rights Commissioner, she is going to work directly with the sheriff's office with a lot of this training. Darcy Miller works with the sheriff's office with a lot of this training with respect to mental health and de-escalation and things of that nature. And just remember that the sheriff's office is CIA certified, and that's really what the 203 was all about, trying to get many other departments to comply with the standards that we're already at. So it was quite obvious to me that we were ahead of a lot of these police departments that are out there because of the tremendous training. Every officer is pulled off the street and trained on a regular basis, more than quarterly, actually. And it's just a really impressive program that they put together, and everybody should know that the complaint button is already up on the website, so that's how fast they reacted to that. It's not something that they're gonna get to. It's already up and running. And as for the bias training, not only do they get that in the academy, but they get that four times a year, and it's gonna continue, and they're even gonna look to enhance it with the services of in-house people. So really impressive stuff, and it was really great to be a part of it, and I hope everybody approves it. Thank you.
Okay. minority leader Paduk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with everybody, actually. I think they did a great job on it. The most important thing is that it's a living document, so there is the ability to change or add as we go forward here. I did want to mention, though, like I mentioned before, the city of Middletown invested themselves at 150K for 10 years in regards to making sure that every single officer, 70 of them, have body cams. So I'm sure that's an open discussion. I know the sheriff's department supports it. I think that's really important. And I will mention, too, which I haven't mentioned before, I don't think, that Towne Walkil has a great program on data on their website, and I'd be actually asking maybe, Mr. Hines, to look into that, have the sheriff department look into that, to see if that might help them in choosing a program in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislator Fagion?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to compliment Chairman Hines from the Public Safety Committee, as well as the sheriff's office. I sit on this police committee in the town of Deer Park, and to be able to look up and see the work product of the county in terms of the sheriff's office is very impressive. And so we've taken some of those issues and brought them into the town of Deer Park for discussion, and it's really great to have such an accredited police force in the sheriff's office leading the way in Orange County. I fully support this, and I'm looking forward to everyone voting in the affirmative. Thank you, Chairman.
Legislator Chaney?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. First of all, I applaud what's been done to date relative to this plan, and also the years of gaining certifications that the sheriff's office has achieved. I would like to remind my colleagues that the resolution that was passed by this legislature on February 4th of this year, wherein we placed upon ourselves the responsibility to, quote, "provide fairness and equal treatment in the county's policies and procedures," unquote. This plan is one such policy, and therefore it's incumbent on us to perform a periodic review of this document. I look forward to conducting that review in the future to determine if the plan and related policies continues to meet the needs of our residents and the desire of this body, and that goes not just for this plan, but other plans and policies of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislators, Sierra? You're muted, Joe. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I made my comments at the Public Safety Committee, and I did want to, I did want to thank the sheriff's office. I know they have a ton of accreditation, and well, before this law came to be in place, I had a chance to sit on the committee for Middletown. They did an excellent job, and I'm glad to hear that every one of the legislators here acknowledged that this is a fluid document, it's a living document, it's gonna change and evolve. I understand that this came down from the state. I feel like we did the best we possibly could, regardless of our opinions, but I'm in favor of the resolution. I am a sponsor on the resolution, and I am happy and glad that this will evolve and constantly be reviewed, hopefully on a yearly basis, and I can, and I'd love to continue to participate with this. So we are all lawmakers. There's no perfect lawmaker, and I believe that there's no perfect law out there. So I believe that we did a good job with this, and is there room for improvement? Absolutely, but I'm happy to be a sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. Thank you, absolutely. Um, I just, I didn't speak at committee on this subject, but I, I'm going to an executive 203 meeting at six o'clock in the Village of Montgomery. It'll be our third meeting. Um, and I have a steering committee, which is very small, two persons of color on that committee, one village trustee, and our chief and our lieutenant in the police department. Because I think this executive 203 was enacted with persons of color in mind, and we've done many parallel things that the, the legislature is doing here and now. Uh, I'm very proud of the committee, and, and, uh, it is a, a, a living document, and, uh, it can be tweaked, and there are a lot of great ideas that, that were mentioned here, and, uh, we have a lot of those ideas in the Village of Montgomery. And I too would like to commend legislator Heinz, um, and the sheriff's office, and, and those involved with the, with the committee. I wish there were more involvement. I know some were invited, and they, they didn't show up, unfortunately, but, uh, um, good job, folks. Thank you. Roll call. Oh, wait, let me just make sure.
Mr. Chairman, if you had my name, please.
Yes, yes, we can, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a voice vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. Yeah. No. O'Donnell, okay. Oh, there's only one, no, right? Luhan? Okay. All right, carry it. Number twelve, another voice vote.
Legislators Paduk, Benelli, resolution confirming the appointment by the county executive to the Orange County Water Authority Board of Directors.
Second bureau.
Okay. Minority leader Paduk?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna mention, uh, Lewin Gossi is one of the new appointees. Yeah, he's a water and sewer superintendent in the town of Walkill. He's probably the, uh, the best people to be on that, so I'm really proud to make sure that I'm, uh, voting for him today, and I'm glad you did.
I know you, I know you've been a big proponent of Lewin Gossi, and so am I. Um, he's a great choice. You've been pushing that for a while. And I agree with you. Peter Tuilie isn't a bad man either, and Eric Tanegut is pretty good, and Dominic Cordisco too, so. Okay, legislator Kulasek, and then Sierra.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just, uh, curious. I know everybody on that list there, and, uh, uh, just curious on the Peter Tuilie appointment. We had a legislator who was a member of the Water Authority at one time, and when he became a legislator, I think he was asked to step down for a reason. Can, can somebody explain that?
Betsy Abraham explained it in committee. Is there anyone here that can explain it, um, that it was okay? It's copacetic. Langdon, can you?
Betsy's right. It's okay. It's copacetic. There, there's no prohibition under the state law relative to members of the legislature serving on the Water Committee. Water Authority, excuse me, Water Authority.
Very good. I just thought that, uh, the, the sitting legislator was, was, uh, either left on his own accord, or I thought he was asked to, to leave, so I was just curious to the reasons why.
No problem. Okay, legislator Cheney?
Yeah, I, I, I believe that, uh, he wasn't forced to resign. Um, he, I believe he chose to, and, uh, it was entirely, uh, up to, up to him at the time.
Thank you, legislator Cheney. Okay, without further discussion, um, all in favor?
Chairman?
Yes. Uh, Joe Menuda, is that your voice I hear? I can't see you answer.
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
So I happen to be he that legislator, who was not the legislator at the time. Uh, when I achieved the, uh, legislative election, I had way too many items on my plate, including, uh, Newburgh School Board at the time, which I followed through that. So just too many items on the plate, uh, is my recollection, and not knowing what the exact, uh, protocol was, I felt the best to do to resign from that committee. So, just so it's all clear for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay, all in favor? Did we get that? Maybe we didn't get it yet, did we? Keep track here.
No, waiting. It's a voice vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, please add John or Sierra to that resolution.
Definitely. Thank you, Joe. Okay, um, carry. Number thirteen, another voice vote. Go ahead, Kelly.
Legislators Paduk and Kulasek, resolution authorizing the filing of an application for state assistance from the household hazardous waste state assistance program and supplement electronic waste assistance grants and the signing of the associated state master grant contract under the appropriate laws of New York State.
Second bureau.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. Okay, number fourteen is a, uh, bonding resolution respiring the super majority. Go ahead, Kelly.
Legislators Ruskevich, Tuilie, Benton, and Menuda, amending bond resolution dated March fourth, twenty twenty-one, amending the bond resolution adopted February sixth, twenty twenty in relation to the acquisition of various golf course equipment at Hickory Hill Golf Course.
Second bureau.
Discussion? Okay. Roll call?
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Ama?
Yes.
Agostakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulasek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Gavitch? Sassy? Sierra? Steganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tuilie? Bureau? Breschak? Twenty-one ayes.
Okay, number fifteen, another, uh, super majority bond resolution.
Legislators Benelli, Ruskevich, Benton, and Sutherland, amending bond resolution dated March fourth, twenty twenty-one, amending the bond resolution adopted February sixth, twenty twenty, in relation to the acquisition of various park equipment at Thomas Bull Memorial Park.
Second bureau.
Discussion? Okay, roll call?
Benelli?
Aye.
Paduk?
Yes.
Ama?
Yes.
Agostakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulasek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Steganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tuilie? Bureau? Breschak? Twenty-one ayes.
Okay, number sixteen, another bond resolution.
Legislators? Legislators Tuilie, Menuda, Benton, and Heinz? Amending bond resolution dated March fourth, twenty twenty-one, amending bond resolution adopted February sixth, twenty twenty in relation to the acquisition of various golf course equipment at Stony Ford Golf Course.
Second bureau.
Discussion? Okay, roll call?
Benelli?
Aye.
Paduk?
Yes.
Ama?
Yes.
Agostakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulasek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ruskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Steganga? Sutherland? Totell? Tuilie? Bureau? Breschak? Twenty-one ayes.
Okay, number seventeen, voice vote. Go ahead.
Legislators Benton and Kulasek, resolution authorizing a private sale in conveyance of certain county-owned lands acquired by reason of failure to redeem said lands from a tax sale to Orange County pursuant to section one zero one eight four of the real property tax law in Orange County amended local law number two of twenty twenty.
Second bureau.
Discussion? Okay. Um, everybody please mute again if you, if you're not muted. Okay, um, well, I'm out. Actually, I'm sorry, unmute. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, carry. Uh, nobody's opposed, right? Okay. So eighteen, twenty, through twenty-two? This is a voice vote. No discussion, right? Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Yes. And I, I have a comment, this is Mr. Chairman.
Go, yeah, go ahead, legislator.
Um, on items twenty and twenty-one, uh, it says ways and means, but I don't remember these coming through Ways and Means Committee. I, I don't. There's a couple of parcels in Warwick, uh, it says the reason that, it says property had an oil spill. I, I just like an explanation on if there's an oil spill on a property from
Is Eric on call or lead that can explain?
Back two thousand and twelve, we're rele, you know, relieving them of the taxes from two thousand and twelve till, to now, it seems like. And, and.
I don't know. Can anybody explain that? Is anybody on the phone to explain that?
Uh, I don't have any backup.
I think I can address it. Um, if that's the property I'm thinking of in Warwick, uh, it was a situation where, uh, oil company accidentally spilled quite a bit of fuel oil into the basement of the house, and, um, you know, of course, that cleanup effort's expensive, so the owners, uh, basically abandoned the property, and, uh, we have no, um, you know, no way of collecting with taxes, and I, from what I understand, from the county attorney's office, uh, they don't want the county to take, uh, title to that co, uh, property because of the liability with the contaminated soil there.
That's, that's definitely understandable. So, does that answer your question, Jim?
Yeah, yeah, but I, I, you know, it, it, it didn't come through committee, so I had no idea what, what the reasoning was, so, and thank you for the explanation.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, um, I'm gonna call upon, um, Majority Leader Benelli to entertain motion of going to executive session, which I'm willing to abstain from. Uh, and I'm gonna head toward Montgomery, because I have that meeting at six, but I will try to, I, I can imagine you guys could be in there for an hour, just my guess or more, so, um, I'm gonna drive to Montgomery, and I'll turn my phone on and uh, try to, when you resume the meeting, try to be out. If not, um, Majority Leader Benelli will, uh, handle four and five. Okay?
And Paduk seconds to go into executive session.
Okay, dude, well, she didn't ask for the motion. Katie, do you wanna do that, or?
I think Mike's already did, so I'll second.
Really go in. Don't say too much bad about me when you're in there either.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
I'll see you later.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, can I ask Kelly and IT to take the appropriate action?
What, what, what is the reason we're going to executive session?
Yes, Langdon, could you please state the reason?
Sure. I, I, I think the purpose of the motion is to go into executive session pursuant to section one oh five F of the public officers law, which relates to employment of various persons, and also for the purpose of seeking privilege and confidential legal advice relating to the appointments to the board of the Orange County IDA and the Orange County Funding Corporation.
Thank you.
And I believe we got a vote to go into executive session. Kelly, could you tell me when, um?
Yeah, I'm just scrolling through right now.
Okay.
And Rodney has to get his, uh, set up. I think he has a banner that he may put up. Might take just a moment or two.
That's all right. Consent resolution first.
I, I would think you should do the consent resolution, because the outcome of that may drive how you act on the other tip.
Okay, and it is my understanding that there is a desire to put a consent resolution on the floor. Um, would somebody speak to that, please, Mr. Ruskevich?
Uh, yes, uh, I would, uh, request consent to place on the agenda resolution of the Orange County Legislature removing members of and appointing members to the Orange County Industrial Development Agency pursuant to sections eight fifty-six and nine twelve of the general municipal law.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Ama, I see that you're trying to speak on the floor, so, okay. All right, so, um, I will grant that and, um, place it on the agenda. And at this point, I believe, Kelly, are you prepared to speak to the motion? Or the resolutions?
I am, yes. This is, please, place on the agenda is item number twenty-three.
Okay.
And let me know when you're ready.
All right, so if you would, um, actually read the appropriate title of this resolution?
Legislators Ruskevich and Ama, resolution of the Orange County Legislature removing members from and appointing members to the Orange County Industrial Development Agency pursuant to section eight five six and nine one two of the general municipal law.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second? Or is the consent the motion second? I'm sorry. Mr. Ama, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I, I, if you want to second again, I'll do it. I'm sorry.
Well, actually, actually, are there any questions, comments, or, uh, some dialogue in regard to this motion? Uh, let me see if there's any hands up.
I have my hand for you, so there's also guests waiting to go into the lobby.
Yes, I, yes, Ms. Totell. I'm sorry? Ms. Totell?
You're muted.
Yes, I, I, I'm sorry. I, I had, uh, trouble unmuting. Um, so in regards to this resolution, um, I need to ask our county attorney to please, um, address the legality of this issue. A question that I had asked prior to this is, by us removing the members of the IDA and Orange County Funding Corp at this moment, does this prevent any other agency from taking legal action against the member and/or former member? I'm looking for a legal opinion on this. I feel it's needed.
Okay, Laurie, you're kind of, um, I'm having difficulty hearing you. I have the gist of what you wanna say, but I think what I wanna do right now, which may answer some of your questions, is before we move ahead with this, if Mr. Chapman could please explain the resolution, and then, uh, hopefully that'll cover it, but then you can go on the record again, because I really wasn't hearing you. Okay?
Yes, I have that, that question, and then, uh, uh, I'm also, I, I would like.
Okay. So we'll let Langdon go, and then hopefully it'll be clear.
Happen now or after discussion.
Okay. I didn't hear you, so let Langdon speak, and we'll go back to you, okay?
Sure.
I apologize for the difficulties here. Langdon, are you there?
Yes, so for the record, I'm functioning as counsel for the legislature at the legislature's request today, because the legislative council is uh, unavoidably not here due to a family matter. Um, with, present with me in my office is Karen Reyes, Senior Assistant County Attorney, who's been involved with this matter. IDAs are formed under, uh, under the general municipal law, and pursuant to section eight fifty-six subdivision two of the general municipal law, this legislative body appoints members and may, for, for the legislature's pleasure, remove members. The resolution, the consent resolution before the legislature does exactly that. It identifies the existing IDA board members and, and purports to remove them pursuant to section eight fifty-six two of the general municipal law and replace them with successor board members. To answer Ms. Tot, legislator Totell's question, my office had discussions, uh, Karen Reyes, along with Betsy, your legislative counsel, had discussions I was not present for with the district attorney's office. The district attorney's office confirmed that the action taken by the legislature would not impede, uh, the district attorney's ongoing investigation, which is a matter of public record based upon the IDA's own disclosure. Karen Reyes was personally present for those discussions with the district attorney's office, and I would ask her to confirm on the record what I just stated.
I confirm what you stated.
That was Ms. Reyes confirming what I just stated.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chapman. Okay, so at this point.
Katie, can I suggest?
Yes, please do.
Katie, I still have a question with Langdon.
Hold on, I have Langdon still, please.
I would suggest this resolution probably ought to be read, because it's a consent resolution. Um, I don't know if it can be put up on the screen for the public to see or not. I don't pretend to know if that's viable. I assume it is, though. But otherwise, I'm gonna suggest that, that we read it into the record.
Uh, I think it's a great suggestion, and, uh, can staff please put the, the resolution up on the screen?
Okay, and Katie, can, can I read that, or can, can that be read by somebody's voice more pleasant than mine, out loud?
Uh, I believe it would, yes. If Kelly could read it for us, I would appreciate it. Is that convenient to do, Kelly?
No problem at all. A resolution, resolution of the Orange County Legislature removing members from and appointing members to the Orange County Industrial Development Agency pursuant to section eight five six and nine one two of the general municipal law. Whereas pursuant to general municipal law eight five six, the Orange County Industrial Development Agency, IDA, may consist of between three and seven board members, member or members. And whereas, as of February first, twenty twenty-one, the members of the IDA were L. Stephen Breschak, Edward A. Diana, James DeSalvo, Michael Gatos, John I. McCary, Mary Ellen Rogolsky, and Denise Quinn. Now therefore be it resolved, one, that such members, while appointed to specific terms as members of the IDA, actually serve at the pleasure of this legislative body, are removed from both the IDA board and, to the extent a resolution of this legislature is necessary, removed from the Orange County Funding Corporation board upon their designated successor, who are each hereby appointed to such boards, qualifying for such boards as follows. Outgoing board member, L. Stephen Breschak. Successor board member, J. Daniel Blumer. Outgoing board member, Edward A. Diana. Successor board member, John Doubtit of Towne Monroe. Excuse me, J. Daniel Blumers from Towne Mun, uh, Newburgh, excuse me. Uh, outgoing member, James DeSalvo. Successor board member, Michael J. Torelli of the Towne-Gosham. Outgoing board member, Michael Gatos. Successor board member, J. Paul Ruskevich of the Towne of Warwick. Outgoing board member, John I. McCary. Successor board member, Vincent Odak of the Towne of Newburgh. Outgoing board member, Denise Quinn. Successor board member, Tyler Etzel Jr. of the Towne Woodbury. Outgoing board member, Mary Ellen Rogolsky. Successor board member, Leslie A. Perry of the Towne of New Windsor. Be it further resolved, in accordance with section eight five six subdivision two of the general municipal law, this legisla, later, this legislative body hereby appoints the above-named successor board members to the Orange County IDA, and to the extent such appointment is not automatic to the board of the Orange County Funding Corporation, and be it further resolved, that this legislative body designates, to the extent necessary, J. Daniel Blumer as chairperson of the Orange County Funding Corporation till the successor chairperson is determined pursuant to law, and be it further resolved, that this legislative body requests the above-named successor board members meet at a time and location, virtually or otherwise, determined by J. Daniel Blumer, and be it further resolved, that the removal and appointment of members provided for herein is made pursuant to section eight five six subdivision two of the general municipal law, and be it further resolved, that in accordance with section eight five six subdivision two of the general municipal law, the clerk of the county legislature is directed to transmit a certificate of appointment of the said appointments to the Secretary of State, together with a certified copy of this resolution, and be it further resolved, that the clerk of the legislature and persons herein appointed may and shall take such other actions as the council to the legislature deem necessary and effectuate the appointments and actions provided for herein, and be it further resolved, that the clerk of the legislature is directed to notify the county executive, district attorney, and authorities budget office of the state of New York of the passage of this resolution.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. So at this point, we will, unless Mr. Lang, and Mr. Chapman wants to add anything else?
I, I do. I have one typo that, that I just identified. I apologize for it. In the very first resolve page of the second page, resolve clause of the second page, it says, "Resolved that this legislative body designates, to the extent necessary, J. Daniel Blumer as chairperson of the Orange County Funding Corporation," it should say, "and Orange County Industrial Development Agency."
Okay, thank you. Correction made. All right. I do have a hand raised, so we'll start our questioning with Ms. Tortell.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Just to go back, because Langdon, it wasn't clear everything you were saying. I couldn't hear everything. By us removing these members, it does not prevent any other agency from taking legal action against the member or former member, not just their investigation. And I also have a question as to the fact of my association with Leslie Pierri's husband. I pointed him to the Town of Highlands as the police chief. I am very friendly with the family, and I just want to make sure that there is no conflict of interest involved there on that.
So Langdon, would you please, please address those concerns?
Sure. So the fact, Lori, Legislature Tortell, that you know somebody and that you appointed somebody's husband to a different job and to this person to a different job is not relevant, doesn't stop you from voting. You have no financial relationship with Leslie Pierri unless you, you have one you want to disclose now. And in terms of the other matter, as I said before, we spoke directly with the district attorney's office, which would be the prosecuting agency, and they advised that the legislature should take whatever action they wish to take, and the DA's office will take whatever action the DA's office wishes to take, and that the legislature is not impeding the DA's office by, by taking action. And again, as I said, I wasn't present for the meeting. That's why I asked Karen to be here. She was present. Your council was present, and we have no reason to believe that that impedes it at all, and they told us it would not.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. At this point, I'll entertain questions. Thanks, Lori. Any questions or comments?
Yes. I would, I'd like to actually make a motion that this resolution be tabled and referred back to, referred to committee. It was never in committee. While I agree with fellow legislators, but I have no confidence in the current board members of the IDA or the staff, we have no guarantee that by replacing these board members, any of the questions we seek will be answered. This resolution I saw for the first time a few minutes ago, other than a few members, Mr. O'Doc, I had the pleasure of reading his resume as he was presented in committee prior to this. I know, Mr., as I said, Leslie Pierri and also fellow legislator Ruskovich, I've not had the opportunity to see the qualification resumes of any other person listed here. I feel that this is an extremely important issue that cannot be rushed in an executive session. We have procedures and committees for a reason. This is very serious, and we have not had ample time to review the research to research this resolution properly, vet it through committee. I make a motion that we refer this resolution to committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. At this point, is there a second to that motion? And I'm looking.
Hi, and second.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Hi, and second.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Heinz. At this point, I will entertain questions or comments in regard to the motion and the motion only. And Kelly, you're going to have to help me because I'm having difficulty trying to see any hands that are raised.
I see Joe Manuda's hand raised.
Okay. And this is on the, on the motion asking for a referral to committee? Is that correct, Joe?
Well, it's regarding Tortell's statement of our fellow legislators having no confidence. That is not the case here. I just want to make that a clarification.
Okay.
I apologize for the presumption of looping everybody together from that.
Okay. I also believe I saw come across the screen, Mr. Deganga has her hand raised?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Point of order, Madam Chair. There's a motion to table. There should be no discussion? No?
This is not a motion to table. It's to refer to committee. Am I correct, Mr. Chapman?
No, I said to table.
Yes, you're correct. No, I think you said to refer to committee. Because I thought it was a very well-done parliamentary question. I've got my Robert's Rules of Order right here. It was well-stated. So if the motion is to refer to committee, you, there's a second required, debates permitted, you can amend the motion to refer to committee, and then it's a majority vote.
Okay. So, Mr. Deganga, did you want to continue?
Okay, so we are, we are commenting on the refer to committee. I just want to clarify this now.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. As this has been a big topic for us over the last probably year, as far as trying to get information on what is going on with the IDA, and we have requested, as being a member of the E and E Committee, and I know our chairman will probably speak of this, he has requested information that we have not gotten, and that as being the legislative body that is supposed to oversee and make sure that we are showing true transparency to our customers, to our residents, and to our taxpayers, I don't believe that this should be tabled. I think that we need to take action. I believe that we're well within our rights, according to our legal counsel and our recommendations as far as being able to do this. And I would vote against tabling this or sending it back to committee at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deganga. I have Legislative Ruskovich's hand just raised. But just later, Ruskovich, you're muted.
Sorry. I put my hand down instead of unmuting. No, I definitely understand the concern with the, you know, the speed at which this is happening. It is a very big decision, very important decision that we have to make here. I, you know, I also understand the need to move forward rapidly. Right now, we have pretty much zero communication with the current IDA board, and I think that's a very big problem, considering everything that is going on and considering, you know, the number of projects that are out there. You know, my main concern in this whole thing is that those projects continue to move forward. You know, right here in work, there's a very big project. I don't want to see that delayed in any way. And I do have a question. If we did send us back to committee, would it be possible that we, do we have to wait an entire month, or could we have a special committee meeting followed by a special legislative session to address this issue?
I, I'll let council answer, but I would believe it would be at our discretion.
I would, too.
Okay. I mean, could we call a special meeting?
Absolutely.
In answer to that question. Okay. I see Mr. O'Donnell's hand raised. I'm sorry. Were you finished, Paul?
Yes, I am finished. Thanks.
Mr. O'Donnell? Mr. O'Donnell may be muted. Yes, he is. Mr. O'Donnell, you're muted.
Thank you. So I won't go into everything I stated previously, other than, at this point, I don't see any new information that's going to influence our vote today. All right? I don't see any reason to wait. This has been discussed thoroughly over and over, and I don't see any reason to not move forward with this, so we can start getting the information we requested tomorrow. There's no indication that we're going to get any information forthcoming. The only way we're going to get information is new board members. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. I just saw somebody else's hand pop up. Minority, Minority Leader Paduk, I believe it was your hand.
It is. Thank you, Katie, Majority Leader. Just a concern with what Lori's motion is. Listen, the appointments here, we don't, like we stated, we don't have the background of anybody, and there's no labor rep on there again now. So I have a concern with that, and I think we should address the members that we're appointing if we're going to do. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments in regard to the referral to committee? Okay, having here, I'm sorry, did I hear, I heard that background?
I don't see any hands. I think it's background noise.
Okay. Thank you very much for confirming that. All right. Then we're going to Kelly, if you would, call roll call.
Penelope?
No.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
No.
Anagnostakis? Benton?
No.
Cheney?
No.
Vegion?
No.
Heinz?
Yes.
Coolset?
Yes.
Wuhan?
I.
Manuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Wait.
Mr. Manuda, you're muted.
I said, yeah.
No.
O'Donnell's a no.
Okay.
Manuda, I'm sorry. You said yes?
Yes.
Affirmative.
O'Donnell's no. Ruskovich?
No.
Sassy?
No.
Sierra?
No, no.
Deganga?
No.
Sutherland? Looks like we lost Janet. Tortell?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Janet and Anagnostakis are still on, but for some reason, and I don't know if they're having trouble unmuting themselves, but they're still here.
Oh, okay. I see Janet has, she called in. Okay. Are you able to unmute yourself, Janet?
I just received a text from Janet, and she said she's a no, but I don't know how we.
Maybe she's unable to unmute herself.
Now she said she's unmuted.
I'm not showing.
Anagnostakis, Anagnostakis was a yes. Silence was an implied yes.
Yes. I have that for you. Yes.
Thank you.
So Sutherland is saying she's a yes. No, no.
No.
Tortell?
Yes.
Tui?
No.
Zero has left the meeting. And Bresch?
I'm an abstention, abstention.
Understand. Okay, we have seven i's, thirteen no's, one absent, and one abstention.
Okay. And I'm sorry, but I didn't hear. Who was the abstention?
Steve Bresch, Chairman.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'm sorry. Could you say, could you say that again? That didn't add up to me. Was that seven i's?
Yeah, it doesn't add up. It's right.
I have seven i's, thirteen no's, one absent, and one abstention.
That's 22.
Twelve no's, Kelly.
That's not right.
It's 12, 7, 1, 1.
I apologize. I'm sorry. Seven i's, 12 no's, one abstention, one absent.
All right. Then we'll move on to any other comments in regard to the resolution itself. Mr. Ruskovich?
Yes, thank you. I have prepared some comments because I didn't want to leave anything out. The purpose of this resolution is to address some concerns regarding the IDA. Back in December, we passed a resolution authorizing funds to conduct an independent audit of the IDA, Accelerator and Funding Corporation. Following that, we sent a letter from myself, as chairman of the E and E Committee, to the IDA Board requesting specific information. Responsibility we received was not from the IDA Board, but rather an attorney hired by the IDA's outside counsel.
Paul, may I just stop you for a moment?
Sure.
Everybody, because it's becoming very difficult to hear you.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you. That's a lot better. Thank you.
All right. The IDA Board then hired an independent auditor, Leonard Vanna, to conduct a detailed audit. They agreed to have Mr. Vanna come to E and E Committee meeting on February 19th to share his findings. Unfortunately, once Mr. Vanna started his presentation, it was evident that we had not received the information that was supposed to be sent to us to support Mr. Vanna's presentation. Mr. Vanna forwarded the information to us and agreed to come back and meet with us at a special E and E Committee, Committee meeting on February 25th, once we had time to review the information. From the information Mr. Vanna did share through his slide presentation, it was evident that there are several issues regarding the management of the IDA that need to be addressed. On February 25th, prior to our special meeting, the AGIA learned that the district attorney would be issuing a subpoena for records and conducting investigation of the IDA. We also learned that the State Controller's Office was also conducting an investigation of the IDA. Our legislative council was informed by Mr. Bettke, the IDA's independent counsel, that neither he nor Mr. Vanna would be attending the E and E Committee meeting. It became clear at this point that the IDA Board will not be communicating with the E and E Committee or the legislature pending the outcome of these investigations. The legislature is the appointing authority of the IDA Board members. We are now in a situation where we have no communication with the IDA and are not able to receive updates as to the status of their many projects and work that is critical to economic development in the county. In order for us to do our job as legislators, it is necessary for us to have an IDA Board that we can have, that we can communicate with and work with to ensure that the work of the IDA continues to benefit the residents of Orange County. By passing this resolution, we will ensure that we will be able to have a strong working relationship with the IDA and address any issues there that need to be addressed. More importantly, we will be able to ensure that the many important projects of the IDA to continue to move forward uninterrupted. I would also like to say that I believe we have good people serving on the current IDA Board, but unfortunately, due to the current situation, we are not able to communicate with them or have a positive working relationship, which is a reason we are not, we are moving forward with this resolution. I fully expect that once these investigations are concluded and we get through this interim period, we will have the opportunity to reappoint some or all of them. I believe that we do need to take action and cannot wait for the conclusion of the pending investigations. It is for these reasons that I will be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
You're muted, Katie.
Majority Leader, you're muted. All right. Now I'm topping, now I'm topping my colleague, Mr. Paduk, with muted names today, and I apologize for that. I want to thank Mr. Ruskovich for his comments, and they were very well taken, and I do concur with your, with your thoughts. So at this point, is there anybody else? I see Mr. Coolset's hand is raised. Mr. Coolset?
Yes, thank you. In the statement that Legislature Ruskovich just read, he talked about possibly reappointing some of the existing members. That's first that came up in this whole discussion today, if either in executive session or now. And that's new revelation to me. Is that, in fact, the Committee's, the E and E Committee's recommendation? You're muted.
Yeah, no, that's not a recommendation, but as, you know, council pointed out, these board members serve at our pleasure. You know, we can remove or add any board members at any time. My point in making those comments was, you know, we don't know what the outcome of any of these investigations is going to be. We're not implying that anybody has done anything wrong. We are just merely removing these board members and putting new board members in so that we can have communication with the board and move forward in a positive direction. You know, once we get to a situation where these investigations are over, we may or may not decide to reappoint some or all these members. That's, you know, to be determined. I just want to point out that that is a possibility in the future. So, you know, if we should decide to do that.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Legislature Benton? Thank you. Mr. Legislature Benton?
Thank you, Mrs. Benelli. I think it's pretty simple today. Our hands are really tied, logistically, I think, and legally. I think we need to do our due duty, and unfortunately, that means that I think we need to move forward with replacing the entire membership. But I will say, I'm not one to throw the baby out with the bathwater usually. So I would like to say personally that I'm not opposed in any way when we find out through discovery with the District Attorney's Office where the problems have been, and I have no problem at all personally saying that I would have no problem with reappointing the prior members back next year to their positions when it is proven that everything is, you know, who did what, when and where. Thank you, that's all. Pretty simple.
You're muted, Katie.
I'm really doing a great job here with that. Just as a reminder, that these appointments do expire on 12/31/21. So that will give us the opportunity to review each and every appointment and make adjustments as we see fit at that point in time. So I think that that's something important to note. All right, I do have Mr. O'Donnell's hand raised. Legislature O'Donnell?
You're muted.
You're muted, Jimmy.
My goodness.
I hear you, I hear you. All right, thank you. So I agree with Chairman Ryskevich. Not only do we have a need to look at every single board member, and whether they did anything wrong or not did anything wrong, I think we're obligated to put people back on that did not do anything wrong. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. I see that, hold on a second. I see Legislative Ama, Party Leader Ama, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I agree with, with Mr. O'Donnell and as well as Mr. Benton. I think it's a sad day for all of us to have to go through this. I've struggled with my thoughts on this, on this very issue. Is this the only way to go? I, I, for one, agree. Once the air is clean and we understand what's going on, I, for one, am willing to join in to reappoint, to appoint where appropriate. We also have to know, as County Attorney told us, even the current members we're appointing, if any of them leave, or there's a reason they change, we could appoint before December 31st. So this is not, this is a fluid situation, and I'm hoping we can resolve it with this and then get back to doing the IDA the way it's always been known and great for Orange County. Thank you.
Right, Legislature Toitel?
Thank you, Majority Leader. To explain my vote, with a lot of heavy consideration and a lot of back and forth, both here and in executive session, I will vote in the affirmative on this resolution with the assurance from our acting attorney, as he already has, that what we are doing here does not prevent anybody who might have any kind of financial or legal responsibility from their actions, that what we're doing here by removing them doesn't prevent us, or any other agency, I should say, from holding them accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Legislature Toitel. I see Legislature Sassy is raised.
Yes, Madam Chair, can I ask you to call the question, please?
Okay. Langdon, would you please advise as to, I believe at that point, all motion, all dialogue stops if we actually call the vote, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that needs a second. I'll second.
One other comment, too?
Yes, please.
I'd like to just put something in here. We've talked about December 31st. They're appointing them to terms expiring December 31st, 2021. I think, let's, let's put that formally in here. I believe it was in an earlier draft. It seems to have escaped the final copy someplace.
Oh, okay.
So moved.
So we're just going to simply add.
Toitel?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Benton, Ms. Toitel, to amend it to make sure that it reads the expiration. The term would expire on 12/31/21. Is that correct? Can I just do a voice vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
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 One opposed? Okay, so that amendment has been granted.
And I'm going to insert that, Katie, before the word, I'm going to insert "to serve until 12/31/2021" before qualifying for such a board in the first resolve, just so we're clear where I'm putting that.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. We do have.
I'm sure. Call the question.
Call the question.
I just want to say one thing, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I was an abstention on that motion. Anagostakis was an abstention.
I believe that was recognized.
Did you formally vote to take this up, this resolution?
All right, everybody, okay, I believe the motion was made by, and Kelly, can you correct? By Mr. Ryskevich as well as Mr. Ama, is that correct?
To place the consent on the agenda, yes.
Okay, and then, so it's on the agenda, and then we started to discuss, so is that correct, Langdon?
As long as you voted to put it on the agenda, quite frankly, I just didn't recall that you voted to put it on the agenda. I just wanted to double-check, so thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cheney's shaking his head no.
Well, as a precaution, Mr. Ryskevich, Mr. Ama, will you reiterate to put, to move this forward for discussion? Just so we have it done correctly.
Yes, I will reiterate what I said again, you know, requesting to place the consent resolution on the agenda.
And I second that.
All right, thank you. All right, so that, that has been put into play. We've had the discussion. We now have a motion. I'm calling the question, so Langdon, please advise.
Okay, so you're, you're voting to put it on the agenda, or, and, and then you're after that going to, Mr. O'Donnell's shaking his head no, but I, I wasn't sure you actually voted to put it on the agenda.
We did.
You did, okay, fine. As long as you voted to put it on the agenda, you've amended it to clarify that it's to serve until 12/31/2021. Now, if you want to call the question on the actual resolution as amended, you're welcome to do so.
And I believe Legislature Sassy seconded by Mr. Benton.
I'm sure.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to make one point. I'm like, I'm in my car, so I can't raise my hand. I just want to, I just want to go on. Yeah, you have some good qualified members on your new board that you're appointing. You know, I don't necessarily agree with the, I'm abstaining from the resolutions, but I do want to say, I want to go on record as saying that I support Vincent O'Doc, because I'm the one that brought his name to the E and E Committee. So I fully support that, and I just want to say one other thing, that the replacement board or whoever's in charge needs to take care of the ABO, there is reporting, this has to be done, and that's the first order of business that should take place, or anything else. Because the IDA has been very compliant with the ABO in recent years, and that needs to be, that's all I want to say. I will abstain from this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I believe that no discussion allowed at this point, because we do have a call. The question, so at this point, Kelly, would you do a vote call, please?
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Ama?
Yes.
Anagostakis?
Abstained.
Why?
Benton?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Pagion?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryskevich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
Yes.
Deganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Sutherland is a yes. She touched the ring.
Yeah, she's a yes.
Toitel? Tui?
Yes.
Zero is absent? Brasha?
Abstained.
Okay, we have eighteen ayes, one absent, two extensions.
Thank you very much, Kelly, for your time here. I believe at that point, this concludes our business today. I really appreciate everybody.
Katie, I have to.
We have four and five still.
Oh, that's right.
So I request that item number four on the agenda, Resolution of the Orange County Legislature Confirming the Appointment by the Chairman of the Orange County Legislature to the Orange County Industrial Development Agency, and item number five on the agenda, Resolution of the Orange County Legislature Confirming the Appointment by the Chairman of the Orange County Legislature to the Orange County Funding Corporation be withdrawn.
I second. Ama? I second.
And obviously, for the reasons that we just took after before, obviously, it was the appropriate thing to withdraw that appointment, because it is included in the resolution that just passed. I believe I saw Mr. Benton's hand up.
No, I'm sorry, just hit the wrong button.
Okay, so then at this point, if there's no other business, I will call for a motion to adjourn, and thank you all very much for your patience and your attention to this very important issue. I know it was a difficult time for everybody, but we worked very well together, and I thank you all for that, and Mr. Paduk is waving to me.
I did, I just want to ask a question. So the people that are in charge now, when do they call the meeting? We don't have any control over that, right, to get things started. We're hurrying to get them there, but who's in control of when they meet?
Well, the first thing is they have to qualify for office, take any necessary steps to qualify. Then you ask Mr. Blumer to be Chairman of the Funding Corporate of the IDA, and to call meetings. So you ask that in the resolution. So they're going to have to act posthaste.
Mr. Chapman, I would ask that you identify what qualifies, because that was something that was a question.
Sure, there's a certificate that's got to be filed up in, in the Department of State in Albany.
And that is filed by.
That's something normally, that's something normally the clerk of the legislature does, so we'll work with, with Gene on that right away.
Before we go, Mr. Kulusek, I see that your hand is raised.
When is the effective date of this?
Well, so your resolution's effective immediately. Those members have to take certain steps now, and we've got to send a certificate to Albany.
Okay, so the existing board is in office until such time?
They, they, they continue until the new appointees qualify, so we'll, we'll take the steps to effectuate the qualification forthwith.
Thank you.
Okay. Right, having said that, I want to thank you again, and at this point, I'll entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Second, Paduk.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Have a great night and be safe, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.